All in favor?
Uh.
In your post? Moving on. Next, we have the public hearing. From the town of South City, proposes. The voluntary management of the area. One of the six. Family care home, shelter house, community home for homeless. And for the seventh type of municipal use. Family care homes. Nursing care homes, intermediate care homes, childcare homes, temporary homes. If you look schedule. What I've been talking. And then turn it over to. Back.
Take a minute. Schedule A at the pocket page twenty. The memo is provided by staff. Fuel background this amendment, the. The group, I'm thinking of saying this right, love chat on. Came to the planning board several months ago. Discussion of something that our homeless shelter in South City. During that discussion, the planning board asked the. Folks that were interested in doing that project, give us some more information, bring it back. Give all your information to the rest of the. Homeless shelter. Discussion. But during that discussion, the planning board was reviewing the existing language in order regarding. Homeless folks. And then across the definition of shelter house, shelter houses currently in orbit. And shelter house included a couple of things, one homeless individual. And the planning board has discussed this item and is recommending what's in front of you this evening. They initiated it as a deep habitize. And then of course recommended approval last Monday at their planning board. So I'm gonna get right into the. That gives, that gives kind of a background. Get right into the amendment itself. On page twenty-three. We, we did clean it up as we meant to as well. The term family care home is the term that the general statute identifies those type of homes. They have a state definition and it's regulated by the state. Pretty much family homes are allowed anywhere single family residence is allowed by law. And so we're adding that to our definitions and we're just going to as defined in general statute. And then the definition that we had in our ordinance, which is similar to family care home, but is titled differently as handicap. Or in front of homes, we're striking it out because it's being replaced by what we know as family care homes. All right, flip it on through. There's a lot of definitions in this section, so we didn't only move it a couple. I'm gonna jump you to page thirty if you don't mind. Everybody here still fine? Oh, D Y, about halfway to page, it's titled Shelter House. This is the first definition remaining as we stated. Currently, the definition reads. Dwelling for victims of domestic abuse, sexual assault at homes. But we're gonna remove the term homeless. And just leave domestic abuse and sexual assault. All right. Oh, let me take thirty-one.
Jack, yes, sir. Before you get away from that, while I forget this. Do we have the term short term? A definition for what is short term? I'm thinking about what, what length of time for.
We do.
I just did, I missed it, I think.
I don't see it right this second. I can pull that up quite quick, but. That's all right, you just. This is the use of this.
Like note what short term, what the timeframe is at short term.
Yeah, we have it defined and it is a hundred and eighty days, I'm pretty sure.
Okay.
Yeah, temporary doesn't have a date specific in its definition. It's just, it's not permanent, temporary is not permanent. Short term does have a date specific, it's a hundred and eighty minutes. I think that's right. All right, flip over to the next page. And this is where we add this new term. It's called temporary home for homes, I'm gonna read this definition if you don't mind. A home, home operated by nonprofit agency for not more than fifteen persons. Who satisfy the following criteria, who are in need of temporary housing together with not more than two resident amenities. All residents of such home other than the manager shall. Except that it's only upon referral from the established agency within the community, such as the police department, salvation army, et cetera. Need housing and intend to reside within the home for at least a week while looking for more permanent accommodations within the community. Be in need of temporary shelter because of some temporary merits or expenses. Examples, pregnant teenagers, battered wives, newly unemployed persons, the victims of their homes. And not, so that's why you would be eligible. But and not because of transgency, deinstitutionalization, chronic unemployment, alcoholism, or drug abuse. There are other opportunities for those types of situations. Temporary homes for the homeless shall be subject to the following. There shall be an on-site supervision at all times by persons employed by or wanted to train by the nonprofit agency operating the shelter. Rules of conduct shall be established and enforced by the agency operating the shelter. These rules shall prohibit the use of or possession of drugs, alcohol, weapons, as well as disorderly conduct. Okay. That's the definition. Got a question? All right, next is the table of uses.
I have just one question. So, i- i- you're saying that limited to, or intend to reside within, or within a home for at least a week? Why, why a week? What, what was the, the reason for, for that? Is there? Somebody just needed a place for like three days?
I, I think that's, that's still okay. I don't think it was intended they hadn't stayed there one week.
Oh, let me read that section again. Because it says it would, to reside for at least a week, so they're gonna stay there a week or longer.
Yeah.
You say up to?
Up to, that's the wording I was thinking of.
Yeah.
Four, four a maximum, huh?
Oh, yeah.
Which short term would be?
Yes, if we said for up to and we, or for a maximum of a week. That would kind of. Yeah.
Yeah, and so I would strike at least and say for a, for a maximum.
And, and while, while we're on it too. And I don't know, maybe it's a, maybe I'm getting ahead of myself, but just to address some other things. Of. If. The battered wives. Should. Be covered under the shelter house because they would be a victim of domestic abuse. Um. Which would give them the longer stay option of a hundred and eighty days.
If it kept from being, if we didn't have a shelter house. This would be an opportunity for those folks. It would open the door a little wider in these situations than, rather than make this much tighter. The shelter house is set up to be much tighter.
Or, but are you, by striking the word homeless from shelter house, were you trying to set up two separate categories?
Somewhat.
Because.
The planning board did not want homeless to be allowing shelter house, shelter houses were allowed in residential suburbs. And so that, that was the purpose of separating the two, the two uses. And so the, the temporary housing for homeless is only gonna be allowed in one zoning district. It's not gonna be allowed in residential neighborhoods.
So let me ask you this then. Could. Victims of domestic violence and sexual assault. Qualify for the temporary homeless and the shelter house, but. The, the folks who otherwise qualify for temporary shelters such as the pregnant teenagers, newly unemployed. They could only qualify for the temporary but not the shelter house?
I, I, well, I think they could qualify, but I, I think leaving it in there because it could be a situation in which. Someone is a victim of domestic violence that just needs a place, you know, for one or two nights before they're, before they can get into a shelter house. Because it may not be.
That's right, but, but when I'm going there, if, if the intent is for these. This group of people who have seriously agreed. To have their option. Then I don't know that we just say battered wives.
I, I was gonna, I was gonna say, I think we need to strike that.
We, we, I think we take the. Victims of domestic violence and sexual assault. And we take that phrase. Instead of just battered wives, because battered wives would be included in that category. That way, folks who are victims of this form egregious conduct. Could have the option of having a temporary. Or short-term shelter.
Yeah.
So.
Because in this kind of a situation, you know, they, you're removing them from that, from that, from the home. And they have no place to go, you know, for a day or two. We're not excluding them.
Okay. And. Building on that. Topic. And this gets, this gets a little, I know this gets a little. Touchy. But if. If a spouse has filed a fifty B. And has been granted a fifty B by the court. To do abuse or what have you. The other spouse is then forced out of the home. The defendant in the fifty B would be out of the home. Um. Is, but I don't see any language. In C K. That would prevent the defendant in a fifty B from applying for temporary shelter. So, once again, focusing on goal of ordinance. And do, and I'm posing the question, do we need to throw in the categories? That do not qualify. For the temporary shelter? I'm, I'm proposing that to the.
Well, you could, you could put, you could actually put that in, in, in item C and not because of. Whatever, whatever we want to put in there, you could put.
Criminal conduct?
Criminal conduct, yeah, criminal conduct. Yeah.
Yeah, so we have the. Karma, drug abuse karma or criminal conduct. Um, and then just one other. And I, I kind of need some help with this. I know, I know my, my goal in my mind. I wanted to hold our ordinance to help our citizens. And so. There's really no language in here that kind of, I don't know how we. I don't know how we tailor that. I could, based on the current language, I could foresee an instance where, because you've mentioned salvation army, nothing is salvation army. What is salvation army in? Raleigh, those of the homeless person. So they call the salvation army here. And then they can work for, that person otherwise meets the criteria. But that then takes away a spot for a Southern City resident. So I want to try to figure out some language. And that's just a, that's just hypothetical. But I want to try to figure out some language wherein it is tailored for our citizens to help our citizens. It's not citizens in neighboring city or county.
Yeah, and I think you could, you could do it along, you could do it along the lines of. In the, where is it, in the. Maybe you could add a, and maybe an item D that specifies that. Space, available space will be, will be. Prioritized based on, you know, the prioritize, you know, solid city or ETJ residence first. And then additional space is available then, you know, for former, former residents. Yeah.
Because at this point, they're, they probably don't.
Yeah, yeah.
Can we also? I mean, we, we, we have a pretty short list of who we're gonna accept, examples of who we're gonna accept referrals for. Could we, could we add DSS and sheriff's department? Because sometimes I. Shavakank DSS, adult protective services usually has a good. A good handle on. Folks who have.
It's not, but, you know, or, or the police department. Sheriff's department. And DSS.
Because I'm just trying to figure out ways that these referrals can be made from an agency wherein we're somewhat sure. That the person. Is here, local, needs local services. And we can attend to those needs. That's, that's, that's kind of what I'm thinking. Uh, to put that out there for the boards to consider.
You agree with that, you said, or you want to?
I just, I'm just spitballing some of my views. On how, on how to, so we, we know our citizenry is benefiting.
I agree with having our citizens as a, as a priority. And then if our ass space is available. If, if there is a need outside of.
So that would be maybe a two C, like a two C, like Bill was saying like. The temporary homeless, but I'm gonna show you something to the following, then we could have seen that.
With the changing in the wording under B, would you read that for me? Uh, where's the, the need, need for housing? If we change it to up?
I'm not sure I got it written.
I, I had written it down.
Okay.
B was need housing and intend to reside within the home for a maximum of a week while looking for more permanent accommodations within the community.
So I have a question. It may take longer than a week to find a place to live. So that's what I was, I was more about sure about the, the reading of it because.
I think, I think what, the, the simple change, I heard everybody, right? It's a short term, so we know it's a hundred and eighty days, the way it's said, uh. Need housing and tend to reside within the home for at least one day. Uh, because, because we felt a week was, was maybe too much to make to my state. But is, is it one day, two day, three day? How many, how many minimum days do you live in state to be satisfied?
So technically, it could be up to a hundred and eighty days, but the minimum is at least one day.
Or, or whatever.
All right. So I just.
Is it two days, is it one day?
I just wanted to get that clarified because it just.
We could say. We could phrase it so that the timeframe for is at least. Two days, not to, but not to exceed. And then we put a. An upper end cap.
Yeah. How many of that? Maybe, um, maybe at least for one day.
We'll do one day and then what's the upper end cap?
To exceed two weeks or three, what's, or one month?
Thirty days to five days?
Yes. That's right.
What is it, four, ten, about thirty days? So we go from one day to thirty. I like Bill's idea about a two C where we. And, um.
Yeah.
Do some language for prioritization.
And I, I did write that down and tell me what you think of this, and this to be item D is that available space and such facilities. Will be prioritized to serve Southern City and ETJ residents first with additional space open to surrounding jurisdictions that are available.
I think we could put that under two C.
Okay.
Temporary homes for the homeless shelter. Yeah, that way we can.
Yeah. There you go.
We narrow ourselves down, the needs here.
Well, you know, we've got more than we need to. Consider this evening, or do we need to bring it back, or? That's, I guess I suck the board.
Well, I'm the same thing, as long as the record reflects exactly the language says B. If it's one B, a doctor.
Is, is there a, um. So is there purposes of making a clean notion? We, we've talked about a lot of changes in a very short amount of time. If there's a pressing need, I guess we could try to move forward with it, but if not, we could. Look at the language at the next hint, next day.
You want, yeah. I think that's fine.
Look at the language as the next day.
Yeah, because we, we, we made some, some significant changes.
The more substantive the changes. Would I would suggest look at another night.
I think you need to prove substantive.
You can continue this public. Public hearing, all right? Yeah, yeah, continue that until next meeting and not have to. We have that.
But, but let's not, so Jack, do you want to get to the other stuff?
Yeah, let's, let's go through the table of uses. That's the next important call here. The definitions are important. But now, so the table. All right, on page thirty-four, we're just gonna relocate the term shelter house. This was a staff recommendation. It's kind of tucked in there where single-family residential and the main factor homes are, it gets lost, I think. Where essentially it's, it's in the same category as each other we've been talking about, which is on page thirty-five. Under one point four, the category is homes emphasizing special services, treatment or supervision. Is, is a, is a type of residential use and they're all in that same group. So we're moving it from what's labeled as one point. One six, I think it's about one, one six. We're moving it down to one point four five. On page thirty-five, so just. Not gonna change where it's allowed, still allowed in the. Two residential districts and also office institutional, but right now shelter house is allowed in R ten and R six. Currently. And it's gonna remain, or is what's suggested by the planning board. Okay. All right, moving on down, family care home. Uh, we changed that out, of course, now it's been a handicap home, it's family care home. We did add two districts that currently last single-family residential. That would be C C and B one. It was permitted by right there, wait. Uh, moving on down to one point four two, which is nursing care and emergency care. Uh, it's allowed by special use permit. Striking it from A R and R twenty. And adding it to B one. Okay, childcare home, same thing except childcare is a permitted use, it's with a zoning permit. Strike it from A R and R twenty and add it to B one. Halfway house, this is a home for those with. Drug addiction, alcoholism issues. Uh, it's a special use permit in A R, R twenty, R ten, R six. Or three. And R M H, I think is the issue. No longer allowed in those residential districts. And only allow it with a special use permit in B one and R. Regarding whatever shelter house, and then last, temporary home for homeless, require special use permit in office institutional. And that concludes the unit, the Spencer Dennis. Or discussion today. Any questions about the table? Uh, so we kind of discussed that a little bit and.
Is the temporary homeless shelter is on a minimum ones?
Yes, sir.
Can that some business?
It's office, office institution, oh, wow.
To give you some example where that would be in our current.
Yeah, West Third Street, you know, hospital. Quite a bit of that area is on office institutional. Um. There's some other corridors, solid, solid business park is office institutional. Not, not a, not a lot of. They are typically around office type areas. That.
Any more questions for Jack? Can I have someone sign up to speak? Okay, we have someone. Anybody else? Anna, what are you, you want to speak? Thank you.
Good evening. So I'm here in regards to the notice I received in the mail. Basically, I want to know how it pertains to myself. Um, it's Eddie Sutcliffe's major modification, special.
Some other one?
Yes, that's, that's the other.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. You're, you're good.
We're not gonna fly the public hearing.
Well, actually, it would be continued until November the first at six thirty. Here, it has to be stated in detail where it will be at what time.
So we're gonna recess the public hearing at six thirty, continue. We're gonna recess and continue the public hearing at six thirty in the Wynn Memorial Library. Just at this minute. Meeting room. On that paper the first. So we get?
For emotion, I don't know.
Other than motion, we continue this public hearing to November first at six thirty in the meeting room at the. Wynn Memorial.
Second.
November. Can you post? Okay, moving along. We have a hearing on the possibility judicial decision. And Jack, I need to swear your name on that is Rick.
And, and you're putting, you'll actually have to swear this other person in that.
Can I do it at the same time?
You can, but you need to ask her, does she have standing? It sounds like she's an adjoining property owner. Is that correct? Yes, so you'll have to swear them both in at the same time.
Yes. And you'll have to. As she may have standing.
Just her. And.
So I need to ask her first before I swear. But do I need to answer that?
Yes.
Do you have standing?
She's, her, her dad on the property, she's here.
She's here proposing.
She has PRA, she's guardian.
I live in the home at the moment. He rents the house to me. She lives, you live there? Yes, ma'am.
You have rental contract?
Uh, not with my father.
Oh, let me have to get that deep into it. I think that it's probably, I feel good about it.
I, I do.
You solemnly swear or firm that the testimony and information you are about to give is true and accurate to the best of your knowledge.
I do.
I've been in the public hearing, thank you.
It's G, H fifty. Back at the bottom of the memo, uh, street history. Uh, this project is, um, located off Pony Farm Road, which is, uh, sort of southeast of town. It's off of Austin Ridge Road, uh, Pass Break Park. Um, Pony Farm Road serves two manufactured home developments, more in the northern states. The other is Hampton Village, the subject of our hearing this evening. September twenty-first, nineteen ninety-eight, the board's commission has approved a special use permits with conditions for a four-hundred-and-forty unit, four-hundred-and-forty-four unit manufactured home park. Um, that project has been, uh, in development stage. There are currently about a hundred and five existing of homes, or excuse me, manufactured home spaces. Uh, currently under construction are forty additional manufactured home spaces. That are getting pretty close to being complete and, uh, have an opportunity to start developing those spaces as well. Uh, streets are paved inside this development. As a part of that original rule, the, um, owner agreed and, and, uh, the board approved two, two things I mentioned, open space requirements in recreational facilities. The open space, uh, was, um, was, was required to have eight point five three acres. The developer proposed eighteen point two-two. And so there'll be, that's going to remain, that's not going to be changing in this, uh, request. What is changing is the recreational facility. There were six mini parks proposed, the total approximately three point seven three acres. All right, uh, I provided some information here, I'm not going to go into detail with it, uh, about number of units and, um, how we qualify, quantify how much recreational space. But, uh, it is per our ordinance today. And, um, let's get right to the modification request. Number of many parks will be reduced from six to four. Total area recreational facility will be reduced from three point seven three acres to two point three five. When I say recreational, I mean active recreational facility. Playgrounds, uh, basketball courts, volleyball courts, those kind of activities. Open spaces, your, 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 your watered-in lawn space or, um, wooded areas could be considered open spaces. Phase one mini park area was twenty-six nine acres, as well as phase three mini park area. And the, um, developer proposed not to require those anymore. And instead, use what we have today, we didn't have it back in nineteen ninety, we do now. Uh, fee and lieu. Uh, and we're going to break this up into two, two different categories as requested by the, uh, development property owner. Fee and lieu for the one hundred and five existing units located in phase one through three A to pay total prior to the issuance of any zoning permit for new units. So the next unit that would be proposed, um, the developer is saying he would pay one hundred and six thousand nine hundred and twenty, nine hundred and ninety-two dollars to the town of Sawa City to put in our, um, park recreation, uh, capital fund, whatever fund it's going to. All right, uh, the, the second part of this is for the forty units that are being, uh, worked on at this time. That, we consider that phase three A through four A, I mean, she can put D through four. And the developer proposes to pay one thousand and forty-seven dollars for each unit, project issuance of each zoning permit. So not a lump sum, but when unit, uh, one oh six, you know, the total, uh, project or the next zoning permit, he's going to pay, uh, one thousand forty-seven. And the next unit, another one thousand forty-seven and so forth. I want to stop there and just make sure we're on the same page as presented, uh, how the developer, uh, is requesting this modification.
So I, I get it, so I'm, I'm not, so he's looking, so what I understand, so there's a hundred and five existing units and he's going to pay a hundred and six thousand nine ninety-two. But he's not going to pay that until we have a hundred and six?
So his next zoning permit, he requests from the town, I put it in my home on there, he's going to pay that one oh six nine ninety-two.
For the next, okay.
And he will pay that thousand forty-seven for that unit as well.
Okay.
So it would be that plus another thousand forty-seven.
Is there a time limit on when he pays?
Uh, no, just they have, it, it requests it to have an age for the premises.
So, so the, the many, so if I understand, then the, the phase one mini park should have been already, should already have been, have been done.
It was.
And it was, okay. And phase three was done.
Yeah, and I think in this project, we're going to build one additional mini park? Two, but just one. Yes, right, just one more. So yeah, this, this, this now phase three mini park will be developed in this space. And that's the way we approve the project. Uh, so that would now just turn the open space, that area, it's not, won't be a, use as a mini park.
So it would increase your open space, plus we'll, we can get all this money.
That's right. All right, now let's go into a few, few more details here. Uh, the way our fee and lieu works is we've got to decide which park, uh, we, we want to put this money for. So eligible parks, uh, the ordinance says two things. One, we can choose the park that serves the community, which is, uh, which is a regional park, which is always or a district park as, as it's labeled. That's Bray Park Sports Complex, that park serves the entire community, all right? Uh, the next nearest community park is Love Creek Greenland, which is only three hundred and twenty-one feet away. So, um, those are the two options, uh, for funding, uh, using this money to fund the project. And then, and working with, uh, Mr. Quill and our park recreation director, uh, we, we talked about this and this is consistent with what we've proposed in the past. It, it boils down pretty much to the need for lights at Bray Park, uh, film two, I believe. And also to further develop the Bray Park Master Plan. And, and that's the recommendation from staff. Uh, Mr. Quill, if you need to ask any other questions. But, um, I think that holds true to what we've shared with you in the past. I know we, we definitely talked about field two lighting. And now with, uh, this proposal, adding what we could start working on our. Of course, it's a, it's a big project, the Bray Park, uh, Master Plan project, the Lord project, so.
So it did have to be, be two force of hearing. You know, some committed all of the parts and stuff.
The, the way the ordinance is designed, and I think, uh, William can help me here a little bit, statute as well, um. You, you want to try to use this money in, in the adjacent area for those residents. And so it's either the nearest park or, um, or the district park.
Jack, this is, this is map of this product, proposed map of the different lots, so if you can see.
Yes, sir.
These, the proposed, the two proposed areas, mini parks, talking about are about where are they located or are they located?
Or one of them's on here, the other one you can't hardly see. Uh, the, the one that I can see is, um, between French and Waterford Street. There's a proposed thirty thousand square foot mini park. And so really close to where it says Kinston Street.
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
All right, the other one, and I'll just get you in the roundabout area, you might get to the, uh, far bottom right-hand corner. It would be off the map on the bottom right-hand corner in there. I can bet, I can tell you better if you were riding. We went up Pony Farm where we turned right on Newland Street.
Starting to sound like me now.
I can see it, Jack.
Yeah.
Well, that, that makes out the original location of that part. They moved it, they moved it here in development. And if it's to your right, you can see it from Pony Farm Road.
Okay.
It's swing sets and, and slides and climbing, um, structures, but it, it's visible from Pony Farm Road and Newland Street.
Okay.
Yeah, so I reckon the reason.
You can verify, I said New, verify sure.
The reason I ask that question is to make sure that the mini park were in a such location where they wouldn't be all on one side, where everybody had a wall, you know. More user friendly, I reckon is better, were more user accessible, you know, and it wouldn't. Yeah, so that's good, I just, I couldn't, I couldn't see it, thank you.
Okay, um, I think there's one other special speaker who has a question for me. Uh, new question to, uh, to call the green, so I, I'll come back up.
So, um, we have Anna Baraya. Would you state your name?
Anna Baraya.
And state your name, Anna.
Anna Baraya, uh, toll-free seven equals, private city, one killing. Um, he pretty much answers the questions that I leave here down.
Is there any more questions or discussions before we close the public hearing? We get a thing? About what you need, Jack?
Okay, on your memo on, um, page fifty at the bottom, we showed our evidentiary here. Uh, now we've got two action items, one considered the major modifications first. That's just approved as, as, as listed on page fifty-one. Staff put together a, uh, a chart there that shows what's, what the modifications are and led. And then, uh, the second voting item will be to, uh, select the, the projects that were, uh, stated in, in the memo, which is Bray Park, uh, field two lighting and implementation of, um, master plan.
And he needs it in separate motions?
William, that's your call.
I don't think it matters, whatever gets him in whatever the course. Between.
Yeah, it wouldn't too soon.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, accept the major modification request.
It's my mistake. I'll, I'll invite, any questions?
I'll make the motion that we use the money received in being lieu of on the Bray Park Sports Complex for lighting and implementation of the Bray Park Master Plan.
Sorry.
I'll invite, uh, any questions? Good thinking. All right, the next we're going to owe is, is talking about immigrant advisory committee appointments, which starts on page sixty-three.
I thought we had the evidence from the, from the.
I'm always going to touch on the top of this checklist.
Uh, Mayor Protem, Commissioner, uh, tonight before you, uh, schedule age on page sixty-three, uh, list the applicants for the immigrant advisory committee. And as you have had time to look through these, uh, the original resolution was stated to adopt and consist of seven members who shall be foreign-born or have recent immigrant ancestor. And that is so stated, there is a copy, uh, of the resolution that the board adopted on page sixty-four. If you look under the fourth point on page sixty-four, is where it states, uh, what the qualifications are for being on the committee. As.
There's a footnote that defines recent immigration and ancestors.
Yes, it states if you are children or grandchildren of an immigrant. And you qualify to be on the committee. Uh, now, as, uh, the board is aware, we had to extend the timeline of four applicants, uh, to apply. And in doing so, we did actually receive eight applications. And as you have looked through those, you've seen that a number are from Sawa City, as well as we have one from Durham and one from Chapel Hill, uh, as well, that applied. So the board has options, uh, other than just appointing the seven. If you would like to move forward with those, we can certainly look at those to include all like.
Yes.
While, while you're on that, uh, when I was looking through this and, and going through the qualification and different things, there's folks on here that's got some real big qualifications, stuff like that. And I was sort of impressed with, but at the same time, there's several people and I have no clue uh, that who they are. And, uh, I personally would like to have a little bit more time to, to look into or, for lack of a better term, make bets on these people, maybe talk to them personally. And also, it's come to my attention that there's also, uh, a couple of people that would be interested in it, just have, but, but they would be interested. And maybe, I think that Sawa City residents is way.
Um, that's my fault. And I don't want to be held against them, but, uh, Shelley De Torre and Tiny Reeves, both work in my office, are interested on the, the board has forwarded their resumes to me. And the blackboard and passing them all. And they, they are Sawa City residents, they do need qualifications. One is a child of parents born in Guatemala. The other is born in, and, uh, El Salvador and is a DACA recipient. Both graduates, J M. One's at college, going to graduate double major, U N C G in the spring. They're both working in my office, I know, they're qualified, and I apologize for not including the information. But I can get that to.
Can we still do it?
I can get that in, uh, this week, if you, you know, I can get that in this week.
Okay, I think what we need to do is have the board, um, to set another timeline for the, the timeframe for the receipt of any additional applications. And, uh, then we will need to look at, uh, what's setting the initial meeting. Because we had, in here, we had set it for November the ninth. And I, I mean, we can certainly change that if that's at the board's direction.
Yeah, I mean, and that was a staff thing, so we haven't told anybody that they have to have a meeting on the night. So, and I mean, we've extended it twice for thirty more days, so if y'all want to do that, then I apologize for that.
Just, uh, just provide direction for staff as to the timeframe and.
For the two weeks and then we come back on the first.
Now, I, that gave me enough time to, to look at some of these, I want to be a little bit more creative. And also give these other two applicants an opportunity to submit theirs and we could be, I'd rather have more of this.
Well, well, two things I'd like to say. First of all, uh, we certainly don't want to discourage people that's already, um, have shown an interest of being in the case. Because we want to encourage people to be involved in Sawa City. Would you think about that? Another thing that bothers me and, and, and I guess because I was looking at some of the applicants is that if we require that they are of a certain origin or one of that, I think that's kind of discriminatory against those that's not. And I think that they could make a good case of that. Because to me, an immigrant advisory committee should consist of people, not only that maybe have the origins, that have the knowledge of the people, their customs and understand and speak the language. that have the knowledge of the people, their customs, and understand and speak the language.
And Mayor Proten, I would like to add that on page sixty-four, as I had indicated, it can come down to the four, whereas that does state in there also having a particular knowledge, skill, or abilities that serve the interests. So I think that is included in the original.
I just want to make sure that we're not going to discriminate against anyone because of their work.
Well, I mean, but the way it is worded now, there's a shall and a must. So, they, the applicant has to meet both problems of four in order to qualify under our current, under our current set of rules.
So, shall?
Shall be composed of seven.
Shall be foreign born or have a recent immigrant ancestor.
Shall be foreign born, and it must have a vested interest in immigrant communities, a particular knowledge, skills, and abilities to assess a dual problem test system in that. And another thing, where you indicated that because we have more than seven members, we, I interpret as you meant we could consider all eight for the board. But number five said it shall consist of seven members.
It, it does, in the original resolution that was adopted, but the resolution could be amended as well, and we could bring it back at the next meeting, depending, you know, what the board would like to do. However, if we are going to consider additional time, the board may want to see any additional applications that come in prior to making that decision. We may want to stick with the seven.
Well, what do you think about what I just said? About not requiring that they have ancestry or recent immigrant ancestry?
I think that it, we, to have, to have an immigrant community advisory committee, I think having those that are foreign born or recent immigrant ancestors, I would qualify for immigrant ancestry because my grandparents are born in Germany. But, so, I mean, I don't, I, I think that having recent immigrant ancestry or foreign born, I think is incredibly important, because those that are further removed from that don't necessarily have the, the expertise or the experience living in a, you know, a foreign country or living in, in an immigrant community.
Well, my thinking is, there may be someone on here that doesn't qualify that way, that they have the expertise and would should qualify. I'm not going to point out any name or anything in the meeting, but I, I just feel like it can be discriminatory. I do, because we are, we are a community of diverse people, and all committees should have diversity.
Well, you know, when a young lady would make a presentation sometime.
Hannah Gill. Hannah Gill.
Yeah, yeah, because that, I had that very same question that I asked her at the time, because it's sort of like what you said, Sealy, I mean, Fran Proten also, that, you know, you have a diverse community, and the way you learn about each other is by getting together and talking about different things, because, well, Tony knows about things I don't know about, and I know about things Tony don't know about. We've talked over the years, we've found that a lot of the topics, thank you. And I asked that question, but when she answered that, and, and it goes to what Bill said, just what the gist of her answer was, that for this to be Hispanic advisory and to have the firsthand knowledge about being an immigrant living here, what that is and all that kind of stuff, they would have the firsthand knowledge. And at the time, I didn't quite understand it, but as I thought about it, it seemed like there's a lot to be going from that, because they're on the front lines, and they understand things, there ain't no way we're going to understand unless we can inter, interact, so, and they, you know. I asked that question, and it didn't go over, that's the reason, it's in there like it is. But I don't, I don't know that it would be an advantage to change that at this point, based on what criteria it is and what we're trying to do. Because you, just like you said, we're a diverse community, we need to learn about each other. This is probably as good a way to do as any, ideally, if we could all be in one big room, shake us all up, you know, see what pops out, but you can't do that.
And also, there is not, it shouldn't just be Latin American, because we do have other nationalities that's in Southern City. And so, I think that's the, that's the other thing that we have to look at, is even though we have not had anyone from the other nationality to apply.
Yeah. But we do. And it says, in Latin America.
Okay, so.
It says other world regions.
Well, that's what I'm saying, is we do have others that, you know, that are immigrants or have the world origin.
We have that information.
So, you know, that's the thing that you have to look at, is it seems inclusive, and it, as Bill was saying, you know, he, he had his ancestors, so it can.
I guess technically we all do, right?
Right.
So, it seems to me that anyone qualifies, we all.
Children, angels.
Children, children, great, great.
Angels, angels.
So, but I guess that's, that's the way I'm looking at it, is that if, if you, if you really pulled it apart and looked at what it's actually saying, it's, it could be for anyone.
I just want to make sure we don't exclude someone that would really be beneficial to the community, because of the wordage of what we expect.
So, you want to leave them up and shut off along?
For those, and I think the language is that difficult for the language. I, I, I don't really have an issue with that, and I think it will accomplish the purpose of what the region set out to do.
So, what's the new date, and I'll make sure I get those applications in this meeting?
For clarification, I think we can stay an additional two weeks. But in doing that, we would need to bring this back actually on the fifteenth of November, giving us time to put all of the information together, getting it back to the board, so that you have time to review it before that meeting.
Okay. That works.
So.
So, we will bring it back to the board on the fifteenth, but we will leave the application period open until November the first.
I apologize.
All right, Jack, you're going to speak to us about the, unless it's, is Ross Street.
Quick update. At the last, I think last board meeting, we support approved funds to hire a structural engineer, take a look at one hundred sixty's probably. And I wanted to update the board where we are today. Good news, last week, we received a email from the property owner, and they have made an application for demo permit and shared the letter from their structural engineer. And so, that's in process. On the day, there's a demo permit, it's being processed, it's some information the county inspection office needs, things related to hazardous materials being removed, and getting an official approval from the state, I think it's got to do. So, that's that part. Number two, the building next door, the Chatham Home Real Estate Building, there's an email in your packet as well, and the engineer reviewing it, it sounds like a quick inspection, it wanted to do a more thorough inspection. I have not got the report on it no more thorough, but it says from our view, up in the ceiling, I did not see anything that indicated any type of roof failure that was imminent. And so, that's why I wanted to give the board that update. We have not needed to scan town funds today, and it doesn't appear we're going to have to. The structural engineer has stated that the cleanup needs to happen, and then a roof needs to be replaced up on the building. And so, that's, that's, that's.
What about all the mold damage? I mean, what's, I mean, what's the mitigation efforts there?
I haven't heard, but I will find out if I can report that back.
Is there a timeline? Excuse me.
I, I think as long as we thought that actively pursuing the demo permit and the demo action, we continue to work with them. Mayor Proten.
I, I mean, like you, I mean, I was concerned about the timeline as well, because when you see boarded up building on that front, and if that's just going to continue and continue and continue, I'm not okay with that.
Yeah, we'll apply the pressure that we're allowed, and I will speak with the contractor about the pressure that we, that the board wishes, that we can certainly do that.
When we're looking at the mold remediation issue, can we also find out and determine if the mold has gotten into the adjacent properties? Because I know it's one thing to have structural damage, but that mold, if it gets in the wall, it can, if it's in the wall, that is for both properties, it's, it's going to affect both properties. And then it can spread.
Thank you for sharing. We'll check in later.
I, I may ask you one question. This doesn't have anything to do with this particular property, but the property that we have discussed, that the Willis, um, what's, what's the, what does it say?
A building permit was obtained for the property by Mr. Lord, and I don't think we've seen any actions since then.
And how long's the building been? Two months?
So, I forget when that permit was issued.
It's been two months.
I think the end of August, I think the end of.
So, I have six months to say.
A building permit has been for six months, but no action is taken, no inspections have been completed. It would expire, and then that, we're ready to move forward if that, if that happens. We don't need any further action from the board, and everything that takes care of us. You know, demo orders have been passed, so we're.
So, there'd be no second chance to get a second permit?
If we can start our action before that happens, we will.
Is there any, or some? Is there any, or some?
I have not talked to them. And I don't think our contract approved it. None of the contractors. But we, we can follow up and see if there's something that's on the road.
This weekend, I saw somebody over there walking around the house, looked like they may be making a proposal to move or to eliminate some of the overgrowth. And, correct me if I'm wrong, that he has some other properties here and there somewhere.
I noticed some family property potentially.
Yeah, and I saw today that was being cleaned up.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, thanks for sharing, appreciate that. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Okay, I was going to speak to us about the nonprofit agency grant, but I just said, we're waiting on.
Mayor Proten and board, during the last budget cycle, which was for the year twenty-two, the one that we are currently in, the board had asked town staff to bring back something, like a health system or criteria scale in order to look at approving a certain percentage and dollar amount for each agency, based on eligibility and score of that nonprofit. So, tonight, Tina is going to bring to the board the initial phase of what we would be looking at through an actual policy that we would put into place, and then she will explain how we will move forward from there.
Okay, so I always mentioned that when we were doing the budget for FY twenty-two, we were asked to come up with a grading system for reviewing the nonprofits, and how we're going to fund those going forward. So, staff has been working to finalize a policy, which we've included in a draft in your packet. Our top priority is to ensure that all our tax dollars are used to maximize benefits for the town residents. So, in the policy, we require agencies, agencies to run specific programs that are going to benefit our residents rather than just funding the operations of the nonprofits in town. And this is a requirement of the statute, our local government budget, budget and fiscal control act. So, that's why we decided to kind of go at funding services and programs rather than just giving money to nonprofits. So, what I first want to point out is the application process. I'm just going to run down it. It's in your package in the memo. So, for a nonprofit agency, the new policy is going to require that the application includes a current solicitation license or a current exemption from that solicitation license. The nonprofits will have to submit proposal applications. They must have the five oh one C three status. First time applicants are required to provide a copy of the letter from the IRS that confirms the status. So, we, we want documentation that they really are a nonprofit. They've also got to submit their most recently filed IRS form nine nine D for the nine ninety easy, if it's required by the IRS. They need to have their bylaws, they're going to have to have a current board roster, and then they're going to have to sign a disclosure of potential conflicts from the town and a non-discrimination clause, with any explanation of any identified conflicts. They're also going to have to have an annual audit or financial review. And for agents, if we kind of split the annual income of the nonprofit, if it's more than a hundred thousand, then an annual independent audit is going to be required. If it's under a hundred thousand, an annual independent financial review will be required, and then, of course, the different considerations.
And as Tina had indicated, this list, this certainly can be expended upon if the board has additional ideas. But these were developed through researching and looking at other local governments, inclusive of municipalities, counties, that have an actual policy in place for funding nonprofits.
No, you get choked out there with Donald Reagan. I just have one thing, because I think what you're doing is excellent work here, and this sort of wells the playing field. We all know where we got to go, what we got to do, but my question is, but I've been sitting next to you too long, it's, these agents, oh, no, it's a bullet point that's not covered in. These agencies must submit the most recently filed IRS form. Well, what I'm saying is, it's possible and probable that they could be applying for funds and don't have a form, we could go back to two thousand eighteen or nineteen, we're in twenty-one, twenty-two, and just on the, if you just sound most recently, you know, that, that, in damn, maybe, and I don't know what the correct term will be, I need help, Lord.
Prior year.
Yeah, prior year. The prior year, prior, prior calendar year.
And we did have in this, but in this cycle, when, when they presented their audits, there were quite a few of them that were two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen. So, if, if y'all want to eliminate those. So if, if y'all want to eliminate those, so if they don't have, you know, the previous year's audit, then, then, then I, I mean, I'm, what I'm hearing is we would eliminate those.
And but if, because if they are continuously late in filing or continuously fail to file, my understanding is they can lose their stats. So I, I think current filing is important.
Yeah, yeah. Because it gives it up to date, snatch up where they are exactly what's involved.
So prior year.
Prior year instead of the most recent.
Prior year IRS form.
Rest of great work, you did a good job.
All right, so once the nonprofit submits all of the their application and all of the required documentation, the, um, what we're going to do is we're going to grade the application. And what we envision right now is grading the applications on like a one, two, three scale. And it's going to be based on the criteria that's in your package and we'll go back in just a minute. Um, and then give each nonprofit or each applicant a score. And then we'll be able to see where they, they stand in the scale. Um, and I did want to point out that right now, the only thing that we want to have approval on tonight, it's just the policy that's going to include the town committee and the general criteria. We'll talk about that in just a minute. And then we'll come back to you with the actual grading scale once we figure out how, how we can do that based on the policy. All right, so the application evaluation and grading criteria are also in your packet. It's in the memo, but we'll run down through it. So we've got five different areas that we're going to look at. The applicant, and all of these areas need to have this information on their application. So the application must have a clear mission, vision and values of the organization. The application has to include clear and complete description of program, service and its delivery. The application needs to have a clear and convincing explanation of how outputs and outcomes support the town residents. The application must present a complete, clear and reasonable list of programs and services, expenditures in a budget and demonstrate how town funds will support the program and service. The application must also provide a strong explanation for town population not being served and how they will increase to serve these populations. So we're actually trying to have their application process give us all the information on how it's going to benefit the residents.
One question. So when we're asking for in the reasonable list of programs, services and expenditures in the budget, are we, are we asking them for specifically how, what they're going to use this money for? Because that, that's not clear in what I've written and what I've read.
Lois, did you have questions?
Yes, so, um, these, these five criteria, how are we going to be grading?
Um, what we're, like I said, what we're envisioning is to take the applications from each of the, the nonprofits and grade them, give them like a one to three probably. And so we're just going to score them on that and then kind of see how they want to go.
Because that's where I kind of want to drill down, get a little bit more specifics. Because let's say you got two, two nonprofits. One provides, and I've alluded to this, one provides life enrichment services. The other provides life-saving services. Both organizations check off all five of these and do all five perfectly. And you're looking at it and you say, okay, they met all the criteria. So they get three use a piece or everything, but how do you then, they don't see anything in here to break, break that down further?
Right, and that, and yes, and that is how what we're after, if we can get the, the policy approved, we're going to expand and go back and staff's going to work on how that, that grading scale. What we're envisioning now is they get a grade and a certain grade will get a percentage of the funding for the year. Because that's going to be based on how many applicants we have, what the funding is, and then what the board is directing us to do for that one year.
I guess where I'm, I'm trying to drill down here too is if these are your five categories that you're grading. There is no, there is no category that, I shouldn't use the word category. There is, is no requirement, application requirement that ranks categories. We're just saying, we're just looking at these five, five points.
I, I, I think I understand what you're saying. So you're saying there's not like a point system?
Right. Four gets, four, four gets close. But like Bill said, it, it doesn't really drill down too much into what are these services that you're providing? And I think that's where we need to have some distinction on the grading criteria. And, and determine though, what's, what's enrichment? What is life savings? Where do our priorities lie? And what, what grade are we going to give there? So I, like Bill, I would like to see some expansion of point four to include some forecast of prioritization for services.
If I can interject that, I mean, I, I know where you're going and, and I support that. I think when, when I look at the grading, right, you could, you could, you know, have the one through five. And in, you know, let's say, you know, in number, you know, in that particular category, you know, five is life saving, three is life enrichment. You, as you design that criteria, which they haven't done yet, you could, you could address what you're talking about in that, in that exact point system within these five categories. Of course, they got, they, they have to be able to define that gap.
So question, for each of the, you know, I'm going with the teacher evaluation. So we have five standards. And under each standard, we have, have, have certain criteria. So are we going to have, is it going to be broken down per, um, I keep saying standard, but I would call them standard. Are we going to have something under each one to say, to kind of be specific for what we're looking for instead of just a broad category? I'm just thinking that if we have, application has a clear mission, vision and values of the organization, are we going to have something that says specifically what it is under each one that we're looking for?
Okay, well, I think we're trying to keep the, the general criteria, general criteria a little bit more broad because we do have, you know, like Commissioner Bailey said, we, we do have different types of services, yeah, different types of services, different nonprofits providing different needs. So we were trying to keep it a little bit broader, but just make sure that they have the information in their application that we need, that we needed to grade them fair.
You said it so much better than I, I did. But that's exactly what I was thinking of, that, okay, one needs this, two needs this, three needs that in the context of each of those, those five standards.
And, and we can certainly evaluate this and look at it a little more and bring it back to you because this is, this is a work in progress. We're trying to develop this policy and, and scoring system. And we do need to be fair and inclusive to everyone that does qualify when the funding is available. And again, I think that's something that Tina wanted to include in the process as we do every year in recommending to the board how much that we would like to include in the budget for nonprofit funding, whether it's based on the, the current percentage that we have used at one and a half percent, which is something that we'll be bringing back to the board because we have realized that is slightly high for what some other local governments are doing as a percentage of the budget. So we may be bringing back an additional recommendation there in, as well as, again, it depends on the number to qualify them. Yeah, it's a lot of work to do, but we did want to start somewhere.
This, 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 that old, you get broad idea of what Chris is about. I li, I like where this is going. I think it's just going to make it more sense when we see the scale, the grading scale.
I, I agree. And we, we talked about wanting to try to do it, but we just knew we needed to get like the bonds put together. And we felt like the policy needed to be built.
And, and as well as making sure, um, we had discussed the fact, uh, if you look on page eighty-nine, under where it says application evaluation that we had just been discussing, we were talking about the committee that would look at these initially. Well, we thought that it would be appropriate to have two board members assigned to this as well to look at it with potentially like three staff members so that the board's point of view is brought into whatever the recommendation would be when the overall board evaluates things.
So do you need a consensus? Do you need a motion? What, what do you need to list?
Well, I guess. I guess what we need to do as well is maybe, and, and I'm making this recommendation for, for Tina as staff is to look further at the five is you all have indicated that you would like as a board and maybe bring this policy back with some additional detail. We just wanted to make sure that we were going in the right direction.
Okay, girl.
And that, I mean.
Are you okay with that? Is that what you were thinking?
I'm sure that, because I'm, I'm not so sure that just having the approval of the policy, you know, is going to help us anymore than having the understanding overall because we can certainly bring this back when we bring some additional information, but yes, sir.
One other thing, I'm just going to bring to the board's attention, which actually is, it's an advantage for us, an advantage for the nonprofits of doing undercover by something we did change here is before, I think we required an independent audit of each one. And an audit requires CPA firm to do a foot and it's an expensive process. A financial review just means that the information supplied by the, of the person, the entity is reviewed by somebody and it says, yes, what they provided is it, and it's a lot less expensive to do that. So it's actually a cost saving to people that are on the small. Now, the bigger ones, the full blown, they're going to have.
They're going to have it anyway.
They're going to have it anyway. But that's a, a change and that, that was almost a, a burden to some of the small ones before. So that's, that's right. Just want to point, and that'll be deal. I just want to make sure we understood what that was.
On that, follow up on that point. You, you may get asked, because it just says annual income, you may get asked from these agencies, are you in the gross or net? But you just say annual income of more than a hundred thousand, annual income of less than a hundred thousand. So, um, you know.
The annual revenue or donation size or budget? Budget size? I would think maybe an annual budget size of less than a hundred thousand or an annual budget size of more than a hundred thousand.
Actually, you're going to get asked that question.
That's why if you go with the budget, then hey, if my, my agency budget is over a hundred thousand dollars, then I got to have, and chances are I'm going to have it anyway for that size. If my budget is less than a hundred thousand, then no, I don't.
Yeah. Anybody else have any more questions between all?
Yes, ma'am.
Moving on. We're looking at, uh, remember eight, replacement of the scoreboard at Earnest Rams, the GM, page nine. And that is.
Well, we, we'll turn it over to Jack. He's here tonight. So I'll let him discuss with the board what the approach was and how he came to the recommendation of the scoreboards.
Thank you. Can you hear me? So early September, Mount Air, Catherine Bassett and Sasha Duncan came to the department. Mount Air was interested in doing something additional for town this year. Twenty twenty-one, as you know, we had a kiss at the chicken festival. We took that initial twenty thousand dollar donation and it is a city member reserve fund thing or something for use twenty twenty-two. They had already budgeted these funds and wanted to do something for the department. So staff got together, looked at what we could use it for, what we needed in the town. And what we came up with is new scoreboards for Earnest Rams Chicken. As you guys know, in the past four or five years, we've done a new floor. The roof is finally repaired. We paint, the gym has come a while away. This would be a solidifying item to add. It's actually two. They're going to replace both boards that we have. So we wanted to come to you guys and like, give you a visual representation of what those new boards might be and what they might look like. Featured the side of city logo and the Mount Air logo. If it is informational for you guys, offering your opinions, thoughts, what you got there.
Did you want to tell?
The current boards do need to be replaced. Last time we got, so we have some lights. These new boards are from Tact Tronics. My understanding is these are wireless. So the new ones will actually use a wireless system. Staff can actually remote control the scoreboard. So if they have to get up and walk to bleach, if they have to step over here, they can actually take it with the board or we have cords hanging out behind us and we're trying to work with the scoreboard boxes.
Also, they can be manipulated through your phone.
Well, really like that. So there is an option to add a mobile app to them. We're not exploring that, we're just checking. Exactly. I would think that's a possibility. How long will your old, old board be up? I could not exactly. I'm not sure.
Sounds good.
No, they're not.
Well, this is just for information that you guys, hoping that we were working on.
Is anybody having questions? Moving on.
How long will it be for you to move?
Sent in just a visual to the manager to see what they thought about it with their logos, statues. The one that we have will file for them. They did like that one, so I'm just going to double check with them, make sure everything's alive. And as soon as we can get an order, we'll get it in, couple of them put them up and move it.
That sounds good. Any more questions? Moving on. All right, Department of Works, if you want to have a chance to look at the Department of Works, if you have any questions, anybody has anything? I have one.
No.
Anybody?
I have a question. And, and it has, it's just something that someone that brought my attention. With the, um, of course, you know, it has to do with football. And it has to do with the court that, that great part. So someone had mentioned to me that, uh, there was the possibility that they were going to be painted over or something instead of replaced.
Still, my workplace with the dash plan, plan still to replace those tennis courts. We are actually having a company putting in lines this week. They're painted on, so you can use the existing tennis nets to play the game, yes. Those will be painted, but should be done Wednesday. It is there to hold us over until we can get to that fourth point where we can completely replace those courts.
Okay, I was just wanting to, to find out because I remember being at George Matthews and instead of replacing our tennis courts, they painted over our tennis courts and made them next. And so I, I just wanted to follow up because when they replaced the tennis courts in the front and didn't do anything to the tennis courts at the back, it was, it was bad. So I just wanted to follow up on that.
This is to give an option and an opportunity to play the ball to play instead of continuing to say, I have to be a school. Instead of continuing to say, I have to use the scoreboard to play exactly like you did there. So this does give them that opportunity.
So the new courts, will they be able to be used for both sports?
Yes. Um, so Roy and I have had a little bit of discussion with getting that playing phase. Uh, we could, we could actually design that facility to incorporate two tennis courts and potentially four stand-off pickleball. It would all be in the way we designed it, yes.
So it's going to be six courts?
Potential. Uh, we can design it kind of how the board.
We do three and three?
Could do three and three. Uh, you can technically put four pickleball courts on one tennis.
Right.
Yeah. So there's, there's a lot of ways to lay it out. So to say something definitely right out, some governments, we do kind of.
Because, well, I guess I, I could say it would be easier to do a vote on the sign since you can have, you know, from the layout possibly.
There's benefits and downsides either way, of course. The way we're doing it now, again, it's an opportunity to play. They do miss a shot, they can shoot it around and match instead of moving. There's, there's things that tough way to incorporate.
So I, I guess I have a question. Uh, when this happens, you know, how we have softball, we have football, we have basketball, we have baseball, will there be a, a, a rec league for pickleball?
Well, pickleball, we're going to.
Okay, that's what I was just asking. Because right now, a lot of people, it's not familiar with it and I think that'd be good. I know it's something else, else that would add to your plate, but. But you know, I'm not saying like, but eventually.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. On the same way out there, we actually are a part of this company, this screen, uh, tennis court. Uh, they're actually partnering with us to offer youth tennis lessons and build an introduction to pickleball. So they actually.
They got a door to this.
They do.
Just make sure we have. You good?
You're good.
All right, Roy and manager.
Uh, so I just have a couple of items. It's time to bring to your attention, I did want to state, we have just been talking about nonprofits. Uh, but last week, uh, we were able to send out all of the checks that were appropriated through the ARP funding that the board had originally approved. So those have been sent out. We've received a couple of responses and we will certainly bring those back to the board in their appreciation. Also, I wanted to mention that today, uh, Jack had indicated that we had a break-in at our maintenance facility at Bray Park. The rear gate latch was cut, you know, removed, of course, with mold covers. Uh, but staff had the PD to come and follow report. And they did not see any items that were missing. I think there was some slight damage to the door, maybe.
The door or the wood.
But what we are going to do, uh, Jack had recommended that, uh, we look at installing a camera system out there due to the location of the building itself, uh, as well as this is the second, uh, time that someone has broken in. Last time, they did remove some items and we had to follow those on the insurance. So, um, just wanted to let you know you'll, you'll be seeing some information coming to the board.
While you're on that, you're talking about cameras. Will this be possible for the camera system to be, uh, sensitive enough and mounted in a position where it not only do the shed, maybe do the concession stand and something of bathrooms in there? We, in a year, Pat, we've had a lot of vandalism and stuff. I'm just throwing that out there.
Okay, we will certainly. Um, and then the, the last, it's time to just be, uh, on receiving the, uh, a confirmation on the shift date for the culvers for history. I had been asked, uh, a number of times this past week about, you know, the update on that. And, uh, we, we were told that on the twenty-eighth, that we will have a date. Uh, so we should know at that point when we can get those, they can start the repairs and hopefully move forward with, uh, with the, the commitment they made, at least for the timeframe of the COVID pandemic.
That's all I have materials are in short flat.
Liam, do you have anything at this point? What about anyone on the board?
I got a question for Jack that I didn't think up during the talk here. Uh, Jack, are cream and lube, do we have any language? Because I just, they're looking at this, I just thought of it because that ten forty-sevens pushed back for each unit. Do we have any language in our cream and lube that addresses present value model? Do you think it's needed? Like if they're, if they're going to delay it, do we get any additional consideration?
Thousand dollar, ten years, that's not the same as ten thousand.
That's my point, yeah.
So good for my, my thought would be, we, we set that amount in our fee schedule every year. So let's say you only build, you know, two or three units this year and then next year, me and Jack work up a new figure for cream and lube and it's now eleven, twelve hundred dollars. If that's a decision, I, I don't know if we lock in at a thousand now and, and, and we need to come back and get more. But I would think if he came in and the fee was now twelve hundred at the time of that permit, it would be a twelve hundred dollar fee.
Well, I mean, we already.
Just recess. The public, we just recessed that, so we could actually come back and make changes.
No, no, we recessed, no.
Yeah.
I should, I should have asked.
We can bring that back for discussion. And it made it clear that whatever the, uh, the current fee schedule is.
Do we need to go back and revisit that? I, you know, we've already closed up on the tier.
Yeah. We've already voted on.
Well, maybe for next time, uh, we can, because I just got to thinking about that. Four units actually took ten years.
It has to be about timeline.
Five years. I mean, maybe a couple of years, but I mean, it could be seven years. Not that I'm complaining about getting money, but there's many, many people who need to look at the present value.
He's just like, oh, he's more bold.
Just not fair shit.
I didn't know it was coming outside.
Does anyone else have any?
No.
All right, so I guess we need a motion, we're going to close session.
I'm making a motion, we're going to close session, uh, for section, um, one eight, one forty-three dash three eighteen dot eleven, eight three.
So, all right, thank you. All right, we're going to close session. And if anyone else does, thank you.